I’d like to call the Wilmington Board of Selectmen meeting of June 27, 2022, to order. All members are present with the exception of Selectman Misselli, who is away on a business trip at this time and is unable to attend. At this time, I would please ask that we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to item number two, which is the transmitting of the Treasury warrants. They are 202251, 202251 Wires, 51A, 202252, 202252 Wires, and 52A. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moves were made, and I have a second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. We do not have any minutes to approve, and we will move into our 7:00 appointment with Joseph Devlin, Esquire, on behalf of Supertarget Liquor of Massachusetts, Inc., doing business as Target. And it is with reference to a request to change the manager from Kristen M. Herbauer, hopefully I pronounced that right, to Tony Galea, hopefully I pronounced that right, and to change the officer/director. Good evening. If I can kindly ask you to join us at the table here, and if you could both identify yourselves for the record, please.
Good evening. Elizabeth Pisano from Upton, Connell, and Devlin, on behalf of the applicant Target. And with me tonight is Tony Galea, the proposed manager of record. As you summarized, we have a change of officers. Janine Brown is being removed, as well as Sarah Waisakis, and they are being replaced by Anthony Haredia. And then the change of manager is to switch to Tony Galea. He is a U.S. citizen, a Massachusetts resident, and is familiar with the rules and regulations relating to the sale of alcohol. And he has been trained in-house through Target for a safe service and sale of alcohol. We’re here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. The package has been submitted to all members of the board in advance of the meeting, so we do have an opportunity to review it. As is the normal course of business, at this time, I would turn it over to the manager to my left, who will talk about the application, the merits of the application, and also any recommendations that he has received from members within the town hall personnel. So at this time, I’ll turn it over to town manager Jeffrey Hall.
So this application has been reviewed by the police chief, Joseph Desmond, and he notes upon review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of the newly-appointed manager, Tony Galea. So it’s really pretty straightforward in terms of change of manager. I don’t have any further comments.
I’ll open it up to fellow board members. Does anyone have any questions or comments at this time? Anyone seeing none? Would anyone like to make a motion to grant this request as presented?
I’ll make a motion soon.
Moves were made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our next appointment, which is a 7:10 appointment. We are running a few minutes early. Is the applicant from Easy Pizza here in the room at this time?
Shall we see if he’s in the hall, Madam Chair?
Yes. Thank you. For the audience at home, we’re just pausing for a brief moment just to see if the applicant might be out in the hallway. We are running a few moments early on that appointment, so if you can just bear with us, we would appreciate it.
Madam Chair, while we’re waiting?
Yes.
This is the second time he’s been in for this, correct?
That is correct. If you recall, last evening, right, last meeting, rather, right before the meeting, he had to postpone coming in due to the nature of business requirements for that evening.
Madam Chair, I’m sorry. I think we’re missing a line on this. One, two, three, four. So I don’t know what that used to be.
Yeah, I think if little isn’t obviously here, but.
Based on the fact that we are, you know, we can give it another minute, but if nobody has any objections, perhaps we can move to the next appointment with Chief Cavanaugh. And if the applicant does come, we can pick it up after. Would that be acceptable, as it’s not a public hearing? So we could move right into the next order of business?
Sure.
And kindly ask the applicant, if he does arrive, to please bear with us as we get through that. So at this time, I’d like to call you forward, Chief Cavanaugh, who is the Wilmington Fire Chief, to talk with us regarding our ambulance replacement. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
So if you can kind of take us through, I know you and your department have been through quite a bit, you know, providing such exceptional service to our residents and businesses in town, but also you’ve had a few things occur of no fault of anybody on your department, but you’ve had to navigate through some challenges with some apparatus. So if you want to take us through this specific item and any other ancillary comments you’d like to share, certainly feel free to do so.
Sure. So obviously, May 18th, we got a group responding up to the highway for a single-car MBA. They would, to access the accident, they had to go north to go south. They were using the emergency access turnaround, which is perfectly legal to do, their lights and sirens on, made the appropriate signaling, started to make the turn, and were struck on the driver’s side. One of our firefighters was hurt pretty bad. He’s still suffering a concussion and the symptoms of such, so he’s still out of work. The other driver had some pretty serious injuries, but is expected to survive. So if you remember, when we went to town meeting, we were looking to actually use that ambulance, the box, the patient care area, to take it off due to the long lead time and the tremendous cost to replace them. And we were going to take that box off, put it on a new chassis, so we cut our lead time down by quite a bit. Obviously, that’s no longer the case after discussion with the town manager and the assistant town manager, not really anything we’re interested in anymore. So we went to Finance Committee last week, and they were generous enough to approve about $100,000 so that we could purchase a brand-new ambulance. But in the meantime, we’re probably still 18 to 24 months out on that purchase. So we’ve issued an RFP for kind of an in-between, a stopgap, if you will, with some pretty tight parameters on mileage, year, condition, stuff like that, so that we can try to get another ambulance to at least help out in between. What I talked to the manager a few times about is, it’s not just the lost revenue that we have, but it’s also the downtime for A1 to go get its general repairs done and the once-over and the oil changes and tires and things like that that it’s going to need. The DPW is very good in this town. About every vehicle that the town owns goes to them once a month to get a good front-to-back and make sure it gets its at-least preventative maintenance and identify any issues before they become big issues without, and that typically for our vehicles usually takes a day or the better part of a day. So if we don’t have another vehicle in between, A1 is not going to get that service. So it’s going to deteriorate quicker than what we would expect. Those should be back July 14th. 10:00 AM is when we open them. So hopefully, at that point, I’ll have a better idea of something that is suitable for us to pursue as an in-between vehicle until we can get the other truck done. Today, I did meet with one of our vehicle providers, and he’s putting in basically our build-out to see what the price comes back at in the timeframe. So that’s where we’re at on A2.
So thank you for that. So I know during the timeframe when some of these incidents had occurred, that you had been speaking with the manager, and I had spoken with you as well. I appreciate the memo that was sent out to the residents and businesses in town indicating that in light of any sort of accident scenarios that your vehicles have been in, that it did not limit the level of service that you were able to provide to the town at any given time, and that between our mutual aid agreements and your coverage plans, that we remained in full force to be able to cover any needs of the town. To that point, you know, right now, how are you handling the ambulance? Are you relying on mutual aid? Are you asking for additional help from the partners that we have? How is that flowing for you from a business standpoint?
So it’s a little bit of both. A1 is still currently in service. I think they left the station this morning at 7:00, didn’t get back till 12:30, and then they went back out at 1:00. So they’ve been out all day. So they’re still our primary ambulance, staffed by Wilmington Fire Personnel, 24/7. They’re handling all the calls that they can handle. And then when there’s overflow, we go to action first to see if they have a unit available, and then we get our mutual aid partners on top of that. So they’ve all been great, Redding, North Redding, Toshberg, Hoover, and they’ve all been excellent sending us. I think we’ve had a truck from just about every community that touches us in the last month, but they’ve all been great. They’re never complaint. They’re more than happy to help out because when they’re in the same situation, you know, we reciprocate. So that’s the plan right now, and it seems to be working. We haven’t, obviously, haven’t missed any calls or seen any decline in service. So that’s what’s been going on.
Thank you for that. At this time, I’d like to open it up to the board to see if anyone has any questions or comments. I’ll start to my right.
Chief, thanks for coming in. Once the new ambulance comes in, the one that’s the stopgap, is that going to be part of the fleet?
So I would, you know, in two years or 18 months, whenever it does come in, I would take a look at it and decide whether or not it’s a viable option for us. Typically, we run two ambulances. We don’t keep a third hanging around, one because we don’t have the space, and two, there really isn’t much of a need for it. Usually, when those, when both of them are in the rotation, we just drop to one for the day until the DPW is done with it. But it’s not very often. The ambulances have been very reliable for us. So I would have that discussion with the manager and the DPW to see, you know, Mike Hardeman, and ask him what he thinks of it. But I would probably recommend it be part of a trade-in deal on the new truck, just that way we can dispose of it, when not stop with the truck that we’re really not going to use.
One other question. I know you’re on top of it with other department heads. With the COVID coming on, 62 in the construction, with the limited ambulance, you know, have any decisions been made as to like how that’s going to be handled? Just going to be, will it be a regular truck on the other side of the town? Is that how?
Yes. Yep. So what we’re going to do is, we’re going to put a pump up in the north side of town. So the engine four is going to be up north with a crew of three members, and they’re all EMTs. They’re all trained EMTs. The trucks have all the same capability as the ambulances have. They just can’t transport. So they will come in and render the initial part of aid, kind of like we’re doing today. A1 was out literally all morning. So our trucks were there before the ambulance got there. They did the initial assessment, the initial interventions. Once the ambulance showed up, they gave report, just like they normally would, and they took from there. So that’s going to be the plan for now. I’m finalizing a different run card. So what that is, is that’s basically what we work off of if we get a structured fire or some sort of major incident. I’m restructuring what we currently have with the town wide open to beef up that north part and to beef up the central part of town, because you’re going to be short an engine coming down from the north side. So we’ll be bringing in neighboring communities earlier than we typically would.
And you’re looking to house it over at the DPW area? Or that hasn’t been decided?
General area. We have a location knocked down right now, but I have to finalize a few things before we make it 100%. There’s a few people I have to talk to, so don’t get in trouble.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Chief, thank you. I’m glad to see you staying out of trouble.
I tried.
I appreciate you being here, and thanks for the update. And I’m very glad, like all of us, to hear that all of your men are okay, and then that’s the most important thing. So be safe, and then thanks for all this work you’re doing to make sure that everybody in town is safe.
Thank you.
Anything to my left?
Chief, just one question on the stopgap ambulance. Is this a used vehicle that you’re purchasing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Jeff, do you have anything?
No, I think it’s all been laid out there. So the, this interim option, if you will, the used ambulance, we would be looking to cover the cost of that through the proceeds from insurance. And yeah, as soon as we can get that decision made, then at least we’ll have, we’ll be back to a second ambulance, and then in the meantime, we’ll be looking to issue the request or proposal on the new ambulance.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
I’m sure our conversations will continue, so.
Absolutely.
Thanks again for all that you and your men and women do. Thank you. So just to revisit the 7:10 appointment, it does not appear that the applicant is here. Would I like to suggest that we put this aside for right now? If they choose to join us at some point within the meeting, we can take it up then, just to be efficient in the event that the applicant does not come forward. Just to speak to you directly to the town manager, what would be the plan? Could we reach out to the applicant to see if their intentions are to come forward as they, they obviously are required to have a common victual license in order to operate the business?
Right.
So if you can take me through what you suggest we do if they do not appear?
Well, certainly, they would be contacted tomorrow to find out if their intentions are to still operate and confirm whether they are operating right now.
They can operate, they just can’t serve.
Inside.
Right.
Okay. Sure. You know, respectfully stated, we’re happy to work with any business and resident, but obviously just. That would be helpful. Yep. So, you know, why don’t we just know that we need to have a plan just to see what their intentions are? Okay, so thank you for that. So at this point, I’d like to move forward with Communications, please, and turn it back over to the manager.
With Communications, the first item on the docket, a letter from John McCarthy, who is the Executive Director of the Mass School Building Authority. And this is the letter inviting the town into the feasibility study stage of the efforts with the Wildwood School. We had a virtual meeting. There were a number of communities involved that are at various phases of their projects. The MSBA Board of Directors meets on a quarterly basis. So this session took place on the 22nd, and it was at that meeting that it was announced that Wilmington, in light of the efforts that we’ve completed to this point, are eligible to move forward into the next phase. They do note that while we are at the feasibility stage, there is no guarantee at this point of financial assistance. We’re essentially working to that point where we would be hopefully getting the authority or getting the authorization to receive funds. The next major stages through this process are the preparation of a request for services for an owner’s project manager. In fact, we had a Zoom session today with staff from the MSBA that outlined that process. So once the owner’s project manager is onboard and that process is in concert with the MSBA, then the next phase would be selection of a designer.
Yes.
If I may, through you, just a question for the manager. First of all, this is excellent news, which I know we can all agree on, but could we make sure that the members of the town’s MSBA committee gets a copy of this letter?
Yes.
Thanks so much.
Just to that point, so there have been two meetings so far, Mr. Manager? This one and one you had today, you said?
These were, yeah, both of them were Zoom sessions. The first one was typically they would take place in Boston there. That meeting was the Board of Directors meeting, which, as I said, is quarterly, and we were invited in light of the fact that we were slated to be authorized to move forward. And then today’s meeting was really essentially a staff meeting where they provided information about the mechanics of the next steps we have to take.
That’s great. Who participated in the meetings?
I was on it, for example, for the board, for both. So I’ll let the manager answer, but I did represent the Board of Selectmen on both of those calls. But feel free, Jeff.
Sure.
I’m asking only because we have a MSBA committee, and I did want to make sure that a representative was on there.
Right. So the first meeting, which was the quarterly meeting of the MSBA Board of Directors, the Chair of the School Committee, Jen Bryson, Glenn Brand, the School Superintendent, Paul Rogero participated. I participated. Brian Harry, the Finance Director, who else did we have on there? George Hooper. I believe those were the representatives from the town.
And the Chair.
And the Chair. And then the most recent meeting, which was today, the School Superintendent, the Business Manager, I don’t know if, I don’t recall if Brian was on it. I was on it and Chair.
Paul was on there.
Right.
And I was on there. Jen was not able to make it. But to your point, you know, certainly, the messages received in this meeting that, to expand that invite, I could tell you that the first meeting, they were very specific about the amount of people on that call. You had to pre-register, and they had to give you the link, and they only wanted a certain audience on there. And then this time around, this was more like an orientation of what’s to come and kind of stepping you through the timeline. So I think futuristically, there would be ample opportunity for other members to be engaged in that process to make sure that the membership that you’re speaking of, you know, is included, and I know Jeff’s noting that now, so.
The next correspondence is with regard to a public hearing notice of the Joint Committee on Municipalities and Regional Government. This, part of the effort after town meeting was to work with our legislative delegation to have legislation put forward with regard to the renaming of the Board of Selectmen. This bill is Senate Bill 2936, and the correspondence was looking for electronic testimony about the particular bill. So that, in response to that correspondence, the next item on the agenda is my response to that, where I’m offering comment as to the rationale of why this is being brought forward and the basis for the request, seeking the support of this committee. Next, under Communications, is the memo from Chair O’Connell regarding the procedures for submitting written evaluations on the town manager’s performance.
So with this, I had asked that this be put in the package. As you all know, per the town manager’s contract, we are to perform a performance evaluation in the month of July, and that we are to provide a composite evaluation to the manager no less than 20 days prior to discussing it in open session. And so what I asked is that this be inserted in the package to go through the procedure for submitting the written evaluation on the town manager’s performance. In accordance with the terms of the employment agreement with the town manager, the board must submit a written evaluation of the manager’s performance to the chairman or his or her designee during the month of July. The chairman or his or her designee shall prepare a composite evaluation based upon responses from board members. A written draft of the composite evaluation shall be provided to the town manager at least 20 calendar days prior to a meeting to discuss the composite evaluation. Members are asked to complete the attached evaluation form and return the evaluation form, and it states here originally to go to Bev, our Administrative Assistant. That is going to change to myself, Judy O’Connell, as the Chair, no later than July 8th of 2022. Your evaluations will be tallied with the composite evaluation being submitted to the town manager no later than July 18th of 2022. The expectation is to discuss the composite rating at the board’s August 8th, 2022 meeting. And I’d like to call your attention to the back portion of the contract that was provided. And specifically, after the signature page of the contract, there is pages one through seven, which is the Performance Appraisal System for the town manager. And so what I’m kindly asking is for each of you to fill out this performance evaluation. You will note after each numbered criteria, there is a section there for you to place comments, and certainly feel free to do that. If you don’t have enough room on this, you can certainly feel free to supplement it with however you want it. I’ll take it in whatever form. And then, as you get to page five, I essentially will receive all of them in, and I will tally the performance, you know, per the criteria that’s set. And then, if you look on page six, it talks about the town manager’s objectives, you know, what initiatives you’d like to see the town pursue over the next year, what areas can the town manager improve his performance, any other comments and suggestions. And then I would put that all together. So in preparing for the meeting, I spoke with Attorney Joe Fair today, just to discuss the open meeting law and to make sure with any past case history that I’m handling this appropriately. Historically, this has never been done, so I’m stepping through this for the first time as a selectman, and I’m stepping through this for the first time as the chair. And so the intent is that it would all come to me and that I would compile it together. Based on the open meeting law, I will not be able to provide any of you with a copy of the composite until the day of the actual meeting. Anything that we discuss and present it has to be presented live during the meeting for the first time. So this will not, the composite will not be in your selectmen package on the Friday that you receive it, which is the Friday before the Monday meeting. You will not receive this until the day of the meeting. So this is the proposed plan. Later on in the agenda for tonight, the manager will be speaking about memorandum that was put together to discuss, you know, his existing work priorities that are within the next year and some multi-year. So basically, at that August 8th meeting, in addition to going through the composite performance evaluation, that would be the time for board members to discuss any suggestions to the manager regarding your viewpoint on priorities and objectives that you would like to see if they complement what he’s working on. That would be the time to have that discussion, because it’s part of this evaluation process for you to discuss those. So when we get to the priorities shortly in this meeting, you know, we talked about it last meeting, it would be a second read for today, and then we’ll be having further discussions as these meetings unfold. As you all know, we’re meeting one time in July, July 18th, and we’re meeting one time in August, which is August 8th. So at this time, I’m going to pause and see if any board members have any questions or comments, or to see how you feel about this proposed plan to roll it out this way, and certainly any feedback, you know, more than receptive to that. Anyone?
I just believe that where it’s a first time, we’re just going to have to run with it, and if we see we should make corrections at a later date for the next evaluation, then so be it.
Okay. We all start with that? Okay. All right. Moving on. Thank you.
All right. Moving on, the next item is memo with regard to the MBTA rail crossing safety issues. We had a, this was a, again, a virtual meeting with representatives from the MSBA, I’m sorry, MBTA. Also participating was Chair O’Connell. Information that was discussed included, you’ll recall from prior discussions, that Mike Mueller from the MBTA had indicated that they’re putting together information to go to the Federal Transit Authority with regard to the platform to be constructed in North Wilmington. He informed us that that information has been put together and sent off to the FTA to the FTA and no clear date as to when they will respond, but essentially they're reviewing the design of that platform and presumably at some point in the near term will either come back with further questions or give them the green light to proceed. Also discussed and was follow-up from a prior meeting. There was discussion about the investigation that was conducted of the January 21st accident. And the plan based upon our previous meeting had been that the the MBTA's Safety Committee would be having a presentation about the findings from that review. We were told that based upon consultation with legal counsel at the MBTA that that public meeting that to review the findings could not take place because there were active claims being filed against the MBTA. So for the foreseeable future, there will be no public presentation of the findings from that January 21st accident. Also, it was noted that the Attorney General's Office has completed a preliminary investigation and they are not pressing charges. They talked about air conditioning units being installed at the Glen Road and the Clark Street huts, if you will. So all of the bungalows at the crossings in Wilmington that can accommodate AC now have them. You'll recall the reason for this is it keeps the circuitry at the appropriate temperature to reduce malfunctions. There was Chair O'Connell, I questioned the rationale for the signage that has been posted as additional signage with the contact information. If there's something awry at the crossings, if you've noticed, they're actually, the way they're facing, they're kind of facing the trains as they're running through Keolis, a representative from Keolis indicated that they would look into that. It's not clear why they're set up the way they are. There was also some discussion about additional incidents that took place during the month of June at the rail crossings. There were a couple of incidents where arms came down and struck vehicles. And both of these instances that were reported, the cameras seemed to indicate that the vehicles in question were trying to essentially run the crossing or get under the gates before they came down. There was one incident on Woburn Street that was identified as a malfunctioning situation with some circuitry. The question was raised about training in light of the incident back in January. They noted that after the retraining that took place from all of the signal maintainers, they're having some additional training that's being run by the manufacturers of the safety devices and that is slated to start or was slated to start the week of June 20th and will continue until the third week of July. They did indicate that the the meeting of their Health and Environmental Subcommittee, which was the one that was slated to talk about the report on the incident on January 21st, their meeting on the 14th. I believe it's a virtual meeting at 11:00 AM. Our next meeting is slated for August 8th at 11:00.
Actually, August 3rd, Jeff.
I'm sorry, August 3rd.
Thank you, Chief. First, I want to thank you, Jeff, for anticipating in all of these meetings and taking the lead on it. And I appreciate the updates that you're providing us. And I noticed that the individuals that are attending, the MBTA still seems to be actively involved in it as they said that they would be. But at the very beginning, there seemed to be a whole host of people attending, which included our legislative delegation. Passed two or three memos that you gave us, our legislative delegation has been missing from these meetings. Are they engaged in any way? Do they get updates as to what's taking place at these meetings? I'm just curious of how that works to keep them in the know, so to speak, of what's happening. They were quick at the beginning and I don't see them in any of the last two or three meetings that you've had.
I have not provided them with these memos. I could certainly do that. I don't know whether there was a scheduling conflict, I seem to recall. And the Chair can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the prior meeting Senator Tarr attended at least part of the meeting.
That's correct.
I don't believe the representative has attended the last couple.
And I know they're busy. I'm sure that they have other things. I just didn't know if the MBTA is sending them, you know, information on their end just to keep them
Right.
appraised of what's happening, that's all.
To my way of thinking, they're invited to all of the meetings and they either accept or decline or in some instances have not responded. There is no summary update that I'm aware of that they are producing because we would be receiving probably the same summary and there isn't. So this really stands to be the only memo of record, in my opinion, that's going out. To your point, you know.
Maybe they have an aide, a legislative aide that can go as a liaison.
That would be helpful. I mean, you know, I think I think it would be something that if, Jeff, you're comfortable with, it may be reaching out to Barack and if Dave has an aide
Right.
to see if they would like copies of the memos so that they can at least be up to date and, you know, try and help with that communication.
And to that point, even Barry Feingold, I think he's going to be taking over for Senator Tarr.
Yes.
So you may want to get him up to speed as to what's going on.
Thank you for that.
Next is an update on the Shawshin School roof replacement. You recall that the town meeting, we head back on April 30th. The request was for $825,000 to replace 24,000 square feet of roofing at the Shawshin School. It's a gravel and tar roof. George Hooper and his group prepared the invitation for bid. The lowest bidder came in at $725,399 and they were awarded the bid for this project. The work is going to be starting. We're really under a tight timeline here because we want to get the roof fully addressed before school opens again at the end of August and staff is typically in a couple of weeks before it ends. So the plan is that they're going to begin working Monday to Saturday, 7:00 to 3:30. There may be instances where they're working on Sundays, 8:00 to 4:30. Again, to try to expedite the completion of that work. The next item is a memo from me with regard to consideration for suspending the state and federal gas tax. This is an item that Selectman DePalmer had brought up at the prior meeting. So I took the opportunity to just check into it a bit. I had an email exchange with Barack Shah in Senator Tarr's office about efforts to this point. Just by way of information, the federal gas tax is 18.3 cents. The state tax is 24 cents. Senator Tarr and I included it with the memo recently signed on to a letter that was submitted to both the Senate President and the Speaker of the State House suggesting a temporary suspension of the tax. It's my understanding that the House has, similar bill was floated and that did not receive support. And it sounds like there's, the Senate is, it's not likely that that's going to take place at the moment. I would just note that, you know, one of the questions that has been raised is whether or not the suspension of the gas tax will have the desired effect. There's some speculation that the companies will not necessarily pass that savings along to the consumer, so remains to be seen. Next is correspondence from me, just updating the board on the Finance Committee transfers. As Chief Kavanaugh reported, we did meet with the Finance Committee last week on a couple of items. The first being to address the ambulance situation. And the request was made to seek a transfer of $100,000 that would supplement the $350,000 that was approved at town meeting for replacement of an ambulance. That was granted. The other request was to address the expenses incurred as a result of the breach of the oil tank at the Wildwood School. The tally of costs associated with that are $1,031,618, $608.17. Maya is providing coverage in the amount of a half a million dollars. There's some other ancillary coverage they're providing in terms of the the septic tank, but essentially that's the dollar amount. So that requires us to required us to seek funds from the Finance Committee. Actually, let me correct myself. The total amount was $1,531,608. When you take out the $500,000 for the deductible or the insurance from Maya, that brings it down to the $1,031,608. So that is the amount that we know of to date. We don't anticipate a significant amount of additional costs, but to provide a little bit of a buffer, I had requested that the Finance Committee authorize $1,075,000 to pick up any ancillary or unanticipated costs that we may have in the next few months. So that was granted by the Finance Committee.
So Jeff, I know that this is just a, you know, Finance Committee transfer reserve account, from reserve account update. But while we're on the subject matter, do you have any sort of timeline when you think all of this is going to be wrapped up and completed in terms of the remediation? It seems, is it taking longer than what was originally expected?
No, I think it's going at actually a pretty decent clip. Fortunately, we, it does not appear that there's, that the scale of the contamination is as bad as it could have been. In some of these instances, there's, you know, ongoing remediation that takes years. This is not going to be the case here. We're expecting by the fall to have that pretty much wrapped up. There's some testing, some monitoring that has to be done, but I think, you know, we should be in good shape by the fall.
And I know, you know, that there's limits to what we can convey to the public, but I, just in, for a resident that might be picking this up for the first time, hearing it at home, they're seeing us transferring and that there was a breach and that we got, you know, an oil delivery that didn't go well. This is one major oil delivery. For someone picking it up for the first time, it's my understanding that we are going to be seeking, you know, reimbursement for any monies that we need to spend. You know, fortunately, we're an enterprise that has money to be able to pay this. You know, there are some that probably are questioning whether or not we should be paying this upfront and then seeking relief on the back end. That's how this process works and thankfully, we have the money to do it. But can you speak in some generality without compromising the town's position to give some information to residents listening at home that we are seeking full reimbursement in earnest for what we're going to be spending?
Yes, there's no question from the town's perspective that we believe that there is a responsible party. It's pretty clear to us who that responsible party is. And the expectation is that we will pursue full recovery of all the costs that we've had to bear to this point and going forward to the extent that there are future costs. So we've been working with our town council. We've been in touch with insurance council. And I'm expecting over the next few months that there will be conversations to bring that to fruition.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item is an update on the Town Hall School Administration Building Committee's last meeting. They, the group met on the 15th essentially to review the exterior features of this building, which is a 43,000 square foot building approximately, three stories. There were four building layout options that were put forward and they all had different features. Essentially, the major differences related to the orientation of the large hearing room and then the small meeting room. For anyone who's been following this, there's on one side of the building, actually the side of the building closest to School Street, there's kind of almost a separate, but it's clearly connected area for meeting space. And so there were a couple of orientations of that meeting space. And then some of the other differences included the differences associated with the main entrance and then the design of the facade. So there was some discussion by those attending and there will be further discussion at their next meeting, which is actually coming up this coming Wednesday. I would also note that there is a public information session that's slated to take place on the 13th of July. That'll take place here at the Town Hall. And the open house will be at 5 o'clock. People can come in and take a tour, if you will, a walk around the building. George Hooper will be showing folks the different areas in the Town Hall. And then the main meeting will begin at 6 o'clock and the architect will take attendees through where we have gotten to this point in terms of the site and the design to this point.
Mayor, Chief?
Yes.
To the town manager, I was not at this meeting. I did watch it after. The last sentence, Jeff, the suggestion was made that a screen and monitor be displayed to show the Roman House. The Roman House is just, you know, a place where you can't work. You probably can't even tour it. So is that going to be a reality, that we're going to have screens with shots of the Roman House? Do you know, is Judge doing something for that?
Yeah, that is, that's the plan. We're going to have, whether it's a TV monitor or one of these big screens. George did provide a tour, if you will, of the school, I don't know, a little months ago, two or three months ago. So we have that available and that'll be running on a cyclist during that open house period. All right, next item under Communications is, again, a memo from me that's outlining the, some of the work that I'm involved in, some of these items being multi-year projects. Some of them are targeting to finish in 2023. I don't know that I necessarily would go through all of them in great detail, but just highlighting some of them. So certainly, one of the items that I'll be working on, and this is a long-term effort, is essentially continuing to develop the relationship that I have with the School Superintendent in terms of our communications. And obviously, there's a number of issues that we work together collectively on. Certainly, the Wildwood School is a major piece of that, but that's an ongoing effort. Looking to continue to press the EPA, to continue their efforts with Olin to complete the data gap analysis. It's ongoing and the initial remediation efforts of the Superfund site. Also, monitoring any efforts to redevelop the Olin Superfund site and engaging with those parties who may be seeking to parties who may be seeking to, to redevelop that site, keeping the Board of Selectment apprised of what's happening there. Pursuing construction of a fire substation, clearly a priority. The ARPA money, as you know, the town received $7,7864. That's been earmarked for multiple purposes, staying on top of that to make sure that we have those funds obligated by December 31 of 2024, which is the federal deadline. Updating the Board of Selectment on the various affordable housing projects that are before the, or will be perhaps before the Board of Appeals. Keeping the board in the loop on the Princeton Project, working with multiple parties regarding the replacement of the Wildwood School and seeking financial assistance from MSBA. Also involved with the Rink and Recreation Committee to see if there's a way to provide more affordable ice that's on a consistent schedule. Addressing acquisition of property as it comes about and is appropriate for the town. Also obtaining the town share of settlements on proceeds from the National Opioid Settlement Process. Some of that is actually just coming to play now. For Fiscal 23, as you know, we have five collective bargaining agreements that are open. One of them is close to being concluded, but there's still four that remain to be negotiated. So I'll be working along with the Assistant Town Manager and others on that. It's critical that we have the transition for new treasurer collector, still in the recruitment process there, working to, with multiple parties, certainly the schools, George Hooper and others, to establish a plan for the interim school space that we'll need between now and when a new school is established with MSBA's assistance. Working with Town Council, as we discussed previously, about obtaining the reimbursements for the costs associated with the oil breach, oil tank breach. Working with the two building committees for the Senior Center and the Town School Admin, and pursuing a positive outcome at special town meetings that will be coming up. Then part of that, working with the Finance Director to finalize the financial plan that we need to have for taking those projects on, reaching an agreement with National Development for a lease on the ball fields and tennis courts off Lowell Street. Construction of the safety lights on Church Street in front of the Public Safety Building. You recall the town meeting authorized funds for grant assistance, and I'll be looking to issue a request for proposal to obtain consulting services to help in terms of writing and administering grants. Shorter term goal here, obviously, is to identify a viable location for a fire substation that continues to be work in progress. Continuing with our discussions with the MBTA in terms of looking at ways to improve the safety of the rail crossings. One of the issues that's been a holdover of sorts, but we're reaching the audit phase here to get the Wilmington High School MSBA project, the, that project closed out and the audit done so that the, any balance can be returned to the town. As is always the case every year, completing the Fiscal 24 operating budget and the capital improvements budget. Also, there's a project I'll be working with Tina Stewart and some of her staff on with regard to a remake, if you will, of a portion of the first floor of the library using Cummings' grant that they recently received and some of the endowment money that they've, they received a few years ago. And then also looking at our options with regard to advanced life support. This was an issue that Chair O'Connell had raised at a prior meeting, but certainly in concert with Chief Kavanaugh, looking at our options there and coming up with a recommended game plan, providing a recommendation for continued legal representation on matters related to the Olin Superfund Site. And then obtaining the legislative approval for change in the Town Managers Act as referenced Next, under Communications is communication from Valerie Gingrich, Planning and Conservation Director. This was a correspondence that was sent to Division of Conservation Services. They had some questions about the open space plan that was submitted by Valerie. She followed up with the information that they were looking for, and consequently, actually the following day, it didn't, didn't appear in your packet, but we did receive a, a letter. She received a letter back from, from the agency confirming that the open space and recreation plan is now, has now been approved, and it will be in effect for the next five years and makes the town eligible for grant opportunities. Next is just a communication from the town clerk, or signed off by the town clerk, noting the reappointment of two individuals to the Finance Committee, the first being Ariane Galezzo and the second being Andrew Alaveen. And then the final item under Communications is some communication from Verizon regarding some program changes.
Okay, moving on to Board to Consider.
The first item under Board to Consider is the signing of Town Council's contract for Fiscal 23. I would note that the contract, there is a, an increase in the fee of $10 per hour, so it is now $220 per hour.
Okay, questions, comments, or would anyone like to make a motion to sign the Town Council's contract for Fiscal Year 2023 as outlined by the manager?
Just maybe I should wait until the motion's made to make a comment, but I, I thought that we at a prior meeting looked at both of these and, and approved them. Am I?
We did not.
No, we were slated to take them up at the last meeting.
We voted to reappoint them. About the contract, okay. I knew, I knew we talked about.
Yes, yes. So we did, we did, we did talk about it, that is correct. And we, we voted to reappoint them. And then this now is the contractual services, and it was on a draft of the, the prior, but you know, we decided to pull it off based on the membership that would be here. And then I spoke to Mark Rich directly and, you know, just said in general, what is the practice? We wanted to vote any contract, not just this. If not all five members of the board were present, and as long as we have a quorum, we can take it up, and the, the actual signing of any board member after that vote is taken is deemed ministerial.
I'll offer a motion to sign the Town Council's contract for Fiscal Year 23.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Next, under Board to Consider, is the contract for the services provided by Brooks and Durensis, Special Counsel for Olin and the Olin Transrail. This, the, on this one, the hourly rate is 3.70.
And that, that went up? The other one went up $10?
This one went up 10.
$10.
Yep.
Would anyone like to make a motion to sign the contract for the Special Counsel Services for 2023?
I'll make a motion.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Hold a second.
Okay, motions are made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Next, under Board to Consider, is a discussion with the Town Manager regarding establishing specific annual goals and performance objectives.
So for this, my recommendation is that we consider tabling this until the August 8th meeting, so that, that gives board members an opportunity to review the handout that was received tonight. And also, you will all be actively completing the performance evaluation by the July 8th date, and that would give you opportunity to give feedback on those performance objectives. And we could discuss it in more detail even on the August 8th meeting.
Make a motion to take no action.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Next item under Board to Consider is executing the Metro North Regional Housing Services Office intermunicipal agreement. You'll recall that Valerie Gingrich has come before the board on a couple of occasions regarding this.
Sorry to interrupt you, I think you missed one.
The police?
Number nine.
Oh, sorry, yeah. I'm sorry. Next one is the dispatch. This is the dispatch group at the Public Safety Building, and they, their contract is set to expire at the end of the fiscal year, June 30th. We've had some discussions, as you know, in executive session. When we looked at their compensation relative to their counterparts in other communities, the, their compensation was on the lower end of the spectrum, so as a practical matter in terms of both recruiting and retaining personnel, it was the recommendation that some adjustments were in order here. So the agreement that is before the board this evening consists of a 2.25% increase in Fiscal 23, a 3.5% COLA in Fiscal 24, and a 4.25% increase in Fiscal 25. Also, we're, they have a six, a seven-step system, so from one year to the next, someone advances from step one to step two and so on. The contract calls for removing the first step so that the current step two becomes the new step one, and then adding a step at the top end. So essentially, you still have seven steps, but they're sliding up one step. The differential between those steps is 4.5%. Also, effective 6/27 of 2025, which would be at the close of this contract, the step one in that new system would be removed so that someone starting in the position would start at what, at that point would be, what would have been step two, they would be, would become step one, and it would go down to a six-step system. Again, looking at the fact that in three years, you know, we have to be mindful of the other communities that are hiring dispatchers. We've struggled in terms of both retaining personnel as well as recruiting people. It was discussed previously, we had just recently two vacancies and we only had two applicants. I would just note that in the last, of the individuals that we have at the station right now, five of them, I believe, are, have been with us since 2018, and seven of them have been with us since 2015. So there's not a lot of longevity there, but we're hoping that this will address some of those issues. Also, we made some other adjustments in terms of longevity. There was a provision in there that if someone went from dispatch into another department within the town and then ultimately came back, they're, they're, they would not have access to the longevity, change that so that they would have access to the longevity system in effect after 12/31 of 2005, which is a flat-rate system. There's a provision in the contract for communication training officers, so individuals who have some experience in the dispatch center for new recruits that are brought in. We, and if they obtain this certification, they're permitted to serve as communication training officers. Currently, they receive $8 for the shift for serving in that capacity, but the adjustment would be made so that going forward, they would get $12 for the shift for serving in that capacity. Juneteenth, which as you know is a federal holiday, was included in the contract. One of the other issues, again, trying to deal with recruitment, is, is the vacation. The way the system works right now, the way the contract language works now, if someone is hired after November 10th of 2022, for example, they would not be eligible for vacation until January of 2024, so that would be 14 months out. Certainly, anybody who's coming from another position with vacation is going to be somewhat reluctant to take on a job. You're going to have to go over a year before you get vacation. So the language was revised to establish that after their probationary period, depending upon the remaining months in the calendar year, that would dictate how many hours of vacation they would be entitled to. So for example, if someone's probationary period concluded on September 15th of 2022, for example, because it's the 15th or any time prior to the 15th, that month would, would count, so there would be four months remaining in the calendar year, so they would get 32 hours of vacation in that calendar year. If that person's probationary period expired after September 16th or beyond, then they would get a three, they'd have three months remaining in the calendar year, so they would have 24 hours of vacation. So we're providing them with some measure of vacation until they can get on track with the, the normal vacation schedule where vacations are granted on January 1st. Also, we addressed an issue which has been the practice, it hasn't been in writing, but essentially, personnel who are hired between January 1st and April 30th are entitled to three days of personal time. Again, that has been the practice, but we wanted to codify that in the contract. And also, employees on unpaid leave are not entitled to accrue vacation, personal or sick time during that unpaid leave, but upon their return, they would receive, it would be a portion based upon the amount of time out of the year that they were on unpaid leave. So those are some of the high points, are, pretty much covers what the changes are in the dispatch.
I'll make a motion to execute the agreement.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
So just for expediency's sake, I would suggest that after the board's meeting this evening, you can sign these contracts.
Thank you.
So the next one is actually the Metro North Regional Housing Services intermunicipal agreement. The services have been provided now for a number of years with multiple communities, Reading, North Reading, Auburn, Saugus, and Wilmington. You'll recall previously, there was an employee, was actually an employee of the town of Reading, was housed in, in Reading, if you will. More recently, they decided to if you will. More recently, they decided to seek the services of a consultant, and they was a procurement process, and a consultant was hired, answer advisories advisories services. And so as a consequence, they will not be housed in any particular town, but they will have office hours in each of the participating communities. This agreement has been reviewed by town council. The services that this entity provides and will continue to provide, they assist the planning department in terms of the tracking of our affordable housing units, annual review of the Avalon Oaks and Avalon West housing plans, providing advice in terms of the 40B projects. So there's a list of bullet points here that Valerie outlines, but I think it's certainly a worthy service. And the cost to the town is $14,500, which is paid through community development.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion.
Motion's been made. Seconded. Any follow-up discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Next is the letter to the legislative delegation on suspending the federal and state tax on gasoline and diesel fuel.
So based on the last meeting, it was kindly asked by selectman DePalma to have this as a future agenda item. In fairness to you, selectman DePalma, I want to turn the floor over to you, and if you'd like to present what you'd like to see. I know the manager has provided some additional information.
Yeah.
So if you want to articulate to the board if you're looking what you're looking for, if your request still remains the same, you know, what action that you'd like to to take, I'm putting this on here at your request. So I'm going to give you the floor.
Thank you. I was looking at it where I'm looking at what gas prices are today. The coffins in the state are bulging with money right now. We know it. And to, I think, help the average person, even for a 20-cent reduction per gallon, you know, at least it's a help. And I feel that if we as a board and the town manager sends a letter to our delegation, our congressional delegation, asking them to put this on on their agenda again, I feel that it's just a way of letting them know that we are concerned. We know what the average person's going through. Gas, it's tough. It's tough. And I'm hearing people already saying that they're going to be sacrificing quite a bit just to get back and forth to work because of the fuel costs. Not everyone lives in Wilmington, works in Wilmington. And it was just something I had thought of, and I wanted to bring it to the board for our members to disagree or agree with me. But I just thought it would be I it would be a good way of just letting them know that we do know what's going on with the general public. Thank you. That's.
Yes.
Thank you. Just a question for Mr. DePalma. So this would be just for to issue a letter to the delegation. Would it be to both Senator Tarr and Representative Robinson? Or would it be to Representative Robinson to sign on to Senator Tarr's letter, which he's indicated on June 7th that he's hoping to do this? So I see like a
Yeah.
number of different representatives on the list. So would it be just encouraging Representative Robinson to join Senator Tarr in this effort?
Both. To encourage Representative Robinson, and also to let the senator know that we do we support this action
Okay.
as a town. That's the way I was looking at it originally, which is a, you know, in a support letter. Tell them, hey, look, this is the way we like it. We'd like to see it. A small, you know, a short period of time suspension of the gas tax, what that can do for an average, you know, an average family. It can help a lot. It doesn't sound like a lot, but you start figuring out per gallon, per how many gallons you use a week. I'm just looking for a way that we can try to help. And I would encourage the letter to encourage Representative Robinson to get on board with Senator Tarr, and also just to let Senator Tarr know that we are backing him on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, please.
Yes.
Just a question. And I'm not I don't I don't know how they voted or didn't vote, but there was a vote that was voted down in the House, and there are 24 reps that signed the letter that was penned by Senator Fatman, O'Connell, and Tarr. Do we know how Representative Gordon and Representative Robinson voted? Did they vote for the suspension of the gas tax, or did they vote against it?
I don't know.
I know Representative Robinson did vote for the suspension of the gas tax.
He voted for suspension of the gas.
Yes.
Okay. And how about
I didn't.
Senator Finegold, who's going to soon be taking over the Senate of the House?
I
I guess what I'm getting at, Gary, and I mean, if they already voted to suspend it, then that's our legislative delegation.
Yeah.
What would be the point of sending out a letter if they all voted to suspend it? I mean, but if they didn't vote to suspend it, then we should know that they didn't. We should find out who did in our legislative delegation, and then draft a letter and send it to them. I know, but.
Well, then, yeah, I would then request a motion to postpone, and I will find out which supported, which didn't support, which is very easy to do, and then bring it back to the board at the next meeting.
And again, I don't
I know what you're saying.
I'm just saying, if they, you know, if they voted.
I understand that.
One other suggestion, I'm not if I'm hearing that there would be a desire to send it to any any elected official that didn't support it. Perhaps you could offer a motion that, you know, speaks to drafting a letter to any elected state or federal official that didn't didn't vote for it to send a letter to garner their support.
We could.
Then you wouldn't have to table it. You'd do the research reported through to the manager. But perhaps we should bring it back to the board just to make sure we have those names in advance, so you know the audience, so that it's we probably should. I'm just talking logistics-wise. Let's I would say that we should probably take no action so that the names of who the letters are going to go out to, so that that's part of.
Part of the.
Madam Chair, if I may, the only other alternative I might offer is that we just there'd just be two letters drafted. One is thank you for, you know, supporting this if they did, and and the other one would be urging them to, in the interest of time. You would imagine they may be taking that up sooner than later. We don't meet till July 18th.
We don't meet till July 18th.
So I mean, if we if we just simply approve tonight that two letters be formed, and then we leave it up to the manager or whoever to figure out who gets what letter, that might save time.
Makes sense.
That's what I'm trying to push this along.
No, that's good.
Yeah, so that way, we don't meet till July 18th, so it could be said and done by then.
Sure.
That makes sense.
I like that.
Sure. Do you want to amend your motion to that?
I will amend my motion to drawing up two letters, a thank you and an encouragement letter.
So that motion's been amended.
And full disclosure, I'll second that motion. Full disclosure, I don't know who voted which way, but so when we find out, we'll send them appropriately.
So you voted a second for the amendment.
Correct.
So all those in favor of the amended motion? Okay, unanimous. And then now we have to take up the amended motion. So would you like to make a motion for the amended motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion for the amended motion.
Second.
Second for discussion. Anything further?
Yeah.
Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Next under board to consider is the open spot on the Economic Development Committee, just to determine whether or not a member of the board wishes to serve as a designee.
So Lil's not here. You know, she has not expressed anything to me. If anyone feels that they want to step forward to be on this committee, feel free to speak up now. In the event that no one steps forward, I would suggest that we, you know, know that this is a vacancy, and if someone reconsiders the desire to be on there, to, you know, seek out my attention and Jeff's to let us know. But at this point, this still remains vacant.
Well, we could appoint Lil if you wanted to. She's not here.
I'd make a recommendation that we postpone till the next meeting, so that when Lil's here, to make sure that she hasn't wavered one way or the other.
Okay, so you want to make a motion to take no action?
Take no action.
Okay, motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Next is a request from the town clerk to appoint additional election workers for 2022.
I'll move to grant the request. Second.
Your motion's been made. Seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
And then the last board to consider, again, is a request of the town clerk to consider the schedule for early voting on Saturday, August 27th. She provided a very concise memo here that outlines the rationale for doing this. She's here certainly to answer any questions. Essentially, in a nutshell, she notes that there will also be on the 27th of August, they're going to be that's the final date to register to vote. So by using the 27th to also have early voting at kind of two for one, if you will, and meets the requirements, which state recent law requires that six hours over the weekend of in that period be done. In this case, the polling would be open from 9:00 to 5:00, so she would exceed that by two hours while at the same time providing opportunities for registration. I don't know if the town clerk has anything further on that?
So I would like to personally recognize our town clerk, Beth Lawrence, who's here. Beth, I'd like to put you on the spot, but if you certainly have anything to add, your memo certainly speaks for itself. But just wanted to thank you for taking the time out of your schedule to be here tonight, and thanking for the memo. Did you have anything that you wanted to add?
No, I am. Well, we're required to be open until 5:00. And if the building's open, we're going to expect a vote, no matter how much we advertise it. So that's that was my reasoning.
I think it's an excellent rationale, so you don't you're not turning somebody away if they come in. Okay. So based on all that's been stated, would anyone like to make a motion to consider the schedule for early voting as presented in this memo?
So moved.
What's been made? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, moving on to public comments. Good evening. If you can state your name and address for the record, that would be appreciated.
First, I wanted to thank Mr. DePalma for his efforts to try to help people in trying to alleviate some pain at the gas pumps. Just a little suggestion on that. It would be nice to be able to have the emails of every single host member and every single senator in the state, that a letter can be sent off to everybody via email, so that we're not just reaching our own legislative delegation. In addition to that, I think the board could possibly have the authority to do something else that would help people on a local level. One of the industries that has suffered through COVID tremendously has been the restaurant industry. And as you know, we have a meal tax, and that might be something that you might want to consider. But I came tonight to kind of talk about a couple other more important, few more important things. As I was looking at the agenda tonight, number 10 on the memorandum list is a memorandum for the town manager relative to the town manager's existing work priorities. And one of the things that I I heard you say, Mr. Hall, was that one of your priorities was to help develop the Olend site. But the one thing that I didn't hear you say is a priority to work to obtain justice for the people of Wilmington, who've been impacted by the cancer-causing chemical and the wells being shut down, particularly the families of children who've gotten cancer and other people who've gotten cancer, who I think the Department of Public Health attributed to the Olend site. And so the last meeting, when I was here, I asked you, Madam Chairman, if you would consider putting an agenda item that was a public hearing to allow people to come in and express their concerns, share their ideas, try to have some type of forum where we could talk about getting justice for the people of Wilmington. And I thought maybe you might have that on the agenda tonight, but I think your comments were that you're going to take it under advisement.
Correct.
And I guess my question to you is, can you share with the people of Wilmington who you've consulted with or who your advisors are on that since we last spoke, if you've reached out to anybody to, as you said, take it under advisement?
Yep, we do have a list of several topics that we have for future agenda items that's that's on there. I'm not guaranteeing that it's going to be on. We have consultations with the town manager, the assistant town manager, various personnel within Town Hall, and with our legal team. So not everything can be instantaneously dealt with and put on an immediate follow-on agenda. I've heard your points tonight at the previous meeting, and this isn't the first time that you've you've made these meetings, comments during meetings. So I understand what your goal and objective is and what your desire is. I do not have a prepared answer for you as to when it will be on a future agenda.
Okay, but have you, like, taken the initiative to send out letters to request some advisement on this? Have you already done that?
I've had meetings with the town manager, and we're having ongoing discussions, yes.
And since it's kind of a legal matter, wouldn't it be fair to say that you should maybe have some meetings with someone who's in the in the area of law?
Correct, yes.
Do you have anything scheduled for that?
As I said, I've had scheduled meetings, and we've opened up discussions, but I do not have a finalized answer for you.
Okay.
And you know who our town council is?
Yes, yes. I I realize we have actually two town councils.
Correct. That's right.
And they're being paid a pretty hefty sum for consulting and for services, so.
I can assure you that I'm not I'm not going this alone. One of my first calls would be to an attorney, but I need to be respectful of everything that's on the town's docket to address. This is a critical, important item, and it's getting the proper legal attention. It may not be in the timeline and manner that you deem appropriate, but I would tell you and anyone that's listening that I'm not just sitting idly by and in letting Olend just sit there and doing nothing about it.
Well.
This is a bigger issue than myself. This is a bigger issue than any one thing. It's it's an ongoing process.
Thank you. What's perplexing to me is that the manager stated tonight that one of his existing priorities is to develop the Olend site.
Well, let me just correct.
Excuse me. What's perplexing to me is having the manager say that, and then you just say that you've consulted with the manager in an advisement capacity about the justice for Wilmington. And to hear that
For the record, Mr. McDonald, for the record, Mr. McDonald,
You wanted the existing.
Excuse me, sir. Sir, I didn't interrupt you. My intent was to monitor the efforts to redevelop. I did not say I was personally seeking to redevelop. So, you know, you're making an assertion that is not accurate. So let's be let's stick with the facts.
I'm sorry. If you want, if you're if you're simply in the capacity of monitoring the development, I stand corrected, Mr. Hall.
Okay, that's fair. Let's move. Okay, that's fair, let's move, let's move on from there. But I, but I will say, before you continue, if I may, is that they're two separate topics. As he indicated, the town manager indicated he's monitoring future development projects that come forward. They go through a regulatory process that's separate and distinct. The town manager doesn't wave a wand and say, approved project, not an approved project. He's keeping apprised of that situation. In terms of justice for the community, that's a separate topic altogether. I understand a linear thinker is thinking, how can you redevelop a site if it's not properly cleaned up? Anyone would come to that conclusion. But the bottom line is, is there are proposals that are continuing to come forward. We can't prevent that, they, they have the statutory rights to be able to do that. Whether they pass or fail, or they get through the regulatory process, that's separate and distinct from any sort of civil action or any sort of legal action. So they're, they're separate buckets.
I understand that, and I, I like to not think legally, I like to think globally, and I like to think strategically, because if there is to ever be justice for the people of Wilmington, there may have to be a strategy in place where there's the seeking of evidence, there's the necessity to obtain samples or testimony that might be needed before the site's developed or excavated, that would bolster our case to get justice for the people of Wilmington. So that's why I was hoping, and actually pleading with you, to actually have a public forum, public hearing, advertise it in a big way to the people of Wilmington. If the Board of Health, if the town clerk can identify death certificates, people who've voiced their concern about their child dying of cancer, having cancer, going through very difficult times, I would think people like that would want to come in and be heard. I would think.
I have noted, I have noted your, I've noted your request, and I'm very well aware of what your wish list is, so if we can move past that.
And I would say, I will also say one other thing, that I did talk to a guy tonight who told me that he had firsthand knowledge from somebody who was directed to dump contaminated chemicals into the lagoon. This was actually today that I talked to this guy. And so, you know, evidence like that.
Again, it's noted, I understand.
The longer, the longer that we wait, somebody that might be a witness, somebody that could give testimony, do we keep kicking the can down the road, let time go by, and then the person pass away and he can't testify?
Understood, your points have been made, I, I hear you.
So that, that was my most important topic. The other thing that I took upon myself to do, since one of the agenda items was the ambulance replacement, I contacted some Ford dealerships, and the Ford Motor Company actually has a website, it's ford.com, where you can go on that website, and you could actually click on trucks, and you could actually build your truck, and you can get a price. And, you know, we had a budget item come before us at town meeting for an ambulance replacement vehicle, and it was just going to be a cabin chassis, and the ambulance body was going to be put on that cabin chassis, and we were told that that amount was $350,000. So what I did was I went on the website today, and I actually, I've been in New York, and I, I took particularly close attention to their ambulances, and most of their ambulances are F-350s. But what I did was I went above and beyond that to a heavier model, a more advanced model, F-450, and I didn't just do the base model, I went to like the, like the platinum level, it's called a limited edition, and Ford, a diesel. I didn't just go with the, you know, small model gas or anything like that. So what I come up with on their website was a price of $97,610 for diesel, four-wheel drive, pretty much a loaded package. So my question is, at town meeting, when we're being told that the truck is going to be $350,000, and, you know, I'm seeing something at less than $100,000.
So, Mr. McDonald, I think.
My only question, my only question is this. Can you talk to the people of Wilmington tonight and maybe give them your perspective on what you believe is a representative of the people? And if you consider yourself to represent the people of Wilmington and watch out for their best interests, including financial?
So to answer your question, there is a procurement process through Massachusetts and for municipalities to follow, and the town manager certainly can articulate that. But I am not of the understanding that a layperson can go on ford.com and order themselves an ambulance. So, you know, the, the amount that was talked about at town meeting was to produce an ambulance back for the town. So whatever you looked at, I would, I would venture to say it's not an apples-to-apples comparison of what a town ambulance is going to look like in terms of lighting, striping, all that it takes to put the ambulance back together. So I believe that what you're able to secure online would not match up exactly to what a procurement process in a municipal world would look like, and it certainly wouldn't be a full outfitted, legal, insurable vehicle that would be suitable to operate a town's ambulance. So I'm going to defer to the town manager if he would like to add to that.
Well, I was just going to say, it was a pretty lengthy discussion at the town meeting, and it was, there was no doubt in my mind that the manager specifically said that, and he offered this, that we're going to take the back of the ambulance and put it on a new cabin chassis. So we weren't buying a new back of the ambulance, but yet we were told it's $350,000 plus.
But what I'm going to do is, is I'm going to ask you to pause, please, and I'm going to ask the town manager if you'd like to add to the procurement process for an ambulance, and, and I would assume that you would be corroborating some of what I'm saying, that it's not as simplistic as just going onto ford.com and ordering a truck.
No, I mean, I, buying an ambulance isn't like going down to your Ford dealership and buying a truck and, and then painting it red. You know, there are certain requirements that an ambulance has to have, as the chair said, it has to be fitted out, have, and I can't go into all the requirements, I certainly don't profess to be a auto mechanic, but there are standards. In fact, these vehicles have to be approved by the state OEMS. So buying a vehicle online from Ford and painting it red isn't necessarily going to work.
Now, who, who's going to put the back of the ambulance on the cabin chassis?
Well, in fact, we're not going to do that.
Because you mentioned that that's what your plan was.
Right, we're not going to do that anymore, because that vehicle was in an accident, and so that option is no longer on the table, so.
Now, was that, was that vehicle totaled?
Uh, yes.
And who's, who's at fault? Was it the town, or was it the other party?
It's the other party.
And what were their insurance limits?
I don't know offhand, but that's certainly.
Because when I look at my insurance limits, I try to like pay extra so that if, if I did mess somebody up, they're covered for any accidents. But on property damage, what I see on mine is a max limit of $100,000, and so.
We're working through the insurance piece now, so we're not, we're not, we don't have those specific reports there now.
So do you suspect that we're not going to have to pay anything as a community, that the other party will completely cover all the expenses, Mr. Hall?
It hasn't been finalized yet, but the intent is to seek our maximum relief.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that. Just the last thing that I wanted to talk about was, at the last meeting, I brought up the fact that the town took land beside the cemetery by eminent domain.
Correct.
And since that meeting, I've done some research on the law, and in the state of Massachusetts and many other states in our country, one of the components that's essential by law that a community has to do when they take something by eminent domain is give the people relocation expenses. And the last meeting, you said.
So before I go any further, it's a pending legal case, we're not going to discuss that. There is, there is a debatable point, you know, on that, which is not, is, is not appropriate for us to comment on that.
I, I don't even want you to comment on it, because I knew that, I knew that it's a legal matter. I just have one simple question. Did this board, whether it was executive session or any, at any other time, did this board direct the town manager to go down to the brown property and tell the people they have to move out? Did this board direct the manager to do that?
There are no public meeting minutes that state that, in any of the executive.
So this board did not tell the manager to do that?
There are no public meeting minutes that have stated that, and any executive session minutes pertaining to that have not been released for public.
Okay, that's fine. One thing that I did notice about the meetings, when I go to other meetings, professional meetings, organizational meetings, and the minutes of the meeting come up at the, say, a monthly meeting, what I notice is, they always vote on accepting the minutes from the previous meeting. But I noticed with the town of Wilmington, we sometimes go nine months before the approval of minute meetings, and I'm just kind of wondering, do you folks all remember what happened like nine months ago at a meeting, so you can approve minutes? Like, why, why aren't their minutes being approved tonight for the last meeting? It seems like that would be the appropriate thing, when every other organization that I've belonged to, that have gone to their meetings, is that, that's their protocol. They approve meetings in the last minute, so.
I don't, I don't believe that your town, your timelines are completely accurate in terms of how long it takes minutes to come through. But your points are noted, and that's your opinion.
And, and just my only other concern with this, since I mentioned about the moving expenses, I did tell you that there was a handicapped person in that home, and so I don't know if the board has thought about this, but when it comes to moving expenses, when somebody's handicapped, and they're being.
So what I'm going to say to you, before you go further, you're, you're stating one side of it as to what you believe to be the case. It's not determined, and no disrespect towards you, you're self-reporting this and putting it out there to the public as it's fact.
I'm just asking a question.
You don't have all of the relevant information. You are getting one side, and I cannot fill in the blanks for you, because it is a legal case.
I, I don't want you to fill in any blanks.
And I can tell you, I can tell you this, that what you are reporting is not the entire accurate picture of what is taking place.
Okay, as long as.
I can't expand on it, because it's a legal matter.
I understand that, I just want.
But you are, but, but just by what you're saying, I will caution you and anyone that's listening, because you say something doesn't mean it's true. Okay, so you're, you're making it as if the town has taken a handicapped person and tossed them out on the street.
I never said that.
That is not accurate.
Never said that.
But that's what you're basically insinuating.
Did I say that?
You're insinuating and connecting the dots so that anyone at home could conclude that, and I'm going to stop you there.
I just wanted to point out a very important thing.
I've given you a lot of latitude, and I have been very.
Nursing homes are very expensive.
Correct, I understand.
If you have to pay nursing home expenses for somebody.
I understand that, but what you are.
Because they're moving expenses, have you considered that?
What I will say to you.
Mr. McDonald, as much as you may believe that you are omnipotent in terms of all knowledge, the town has given a lot of consideration to this case. The chair has told you multiple times that this is an active legal matter, and as much as you want to try to pry and prod and get information, the fact of the matter is, we're well aware of all the things you're talking about. You've done a fine job of mischaracterizing what the circumstances are, but at the end of the day, we know the situation, and the matter is, is before counsel.
Mr. Hall, did you go down there and tell the people they had to move out?
He's not going to answer your questions.
Of course.
It's a legal matter, and what you are reporting, you are not going to vilify this board as if.
I'm not reporting anything, I'm just asking some questions.
But I know what your intentions are, and it's clear, that you are trying to insinuate something that is not true.
Just wanted to, just wanted to let the board be aware that the town has expenses.
Your account of activities is not what has occurred, and the town, and the, and the board has, has tried to work through the situation in a very friendly manner.
Now, regarding the cemetery, do people, private people have to pay money for a plot? Like, if somebody was to die, do they have to pay money to buy a plot?
Yes, they do.
So could there be a question that it's really not public land, it's private, because somebody owns that land, because they paid for that? Is it like 100% public? Have you considered that?
It's a town, it's town land.
Okay.
And they're, and they're purchasing it through the town.
Just wanted to make, just wanted to ask that question, because I, I kind of wondered.
It's public land, and it's publicly named.
Is it 100% public when somebody purchases a plot of land?
I don't, I don't, I don't know the relevance.
I don't know either, I'm just asking, I thought you might know.
You can maybe use that for trivial purposes.
I don't think I'm omnipotent or all-knowing or anything like that, never did say that. But thank you for maybe thinking I am, I don't know. You know.
So is, is there anything else that you have, or can you bring your comments to a close, please?
No, I think that's about it, but I, I guess, I guess the people of Wilmington are just kind of waiting to see if you're going to bring that agenda item for justice for Wilmington for the all-in-one contamination.
Thank you.
A lot of kids, you know, get cancer, to the extent that the Department of Public Health would issue a finding, do a major study on that.
Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to announcements. Anything to my left? Anything to my right? Yes, sir.
Just wanted to publicly thank the members of the Fort July Committee, who have worked so hard to prepare for this coming week, and really looking forward to it. I know many families are, and so I hope for great weather, and I hope everybody has a great time, but again, hats off to the Fort July Committee, one of which is in the room, so I want to thank her as well.
Anything over here? Okay. Anything for new business? Hearing none. Okay, moving on to important dates.
Important dates, first item is the farmer's market, which runs through October 2nd, Town Common Parking Lot, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. The one exception, of course, will be this coming Sunday with the July 4th activities. They'll be over at the Yentile. July 29th, the Town Hall School Admin Building Committee, Town Hall Room 9, 6:00 PM. July 4th activities run from June 30th to July 3rd, 978-657-8081, or funonthe4th.com if you're looking for information. Spectacular fireworks are on the 3rd, Family Fun Day is July 2nd, Town Common. And then July 4th is Independence Day, of course, Town Hall is closed. July 6th is the Senior Center Building Committee meeting, Town Hall Room 9, 6:00 PM. Concert on the Common, 6:30 on July 6th, the group is Backtrack. July 13th, Brush Drop Off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Also, as previously noted, Town Hall School Admin Building Committee meets Town Hall Room 9, 6:00 PM, the building tours are from 5 to 6. July 13th is also Concerts on the Common, 6:30, Jimmy and the Jesters. July 16th, Brush Drop Off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. July 18th, Board of Selectmen's meeting, Town Hall Room 9, 7:00 PM. July 20th, Concerts on the Common, 6:30, Ball in the House. And July 27th, Concerts on the Common, 6:30 PM, Joe Larry. July 30th, Household Hazardous Waste Day, West Intermediate School Parking Lot, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Thank you, and at this time, salute to service, I'd like to turn it over to Selectman Bendel.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and on behalf of the board and the residents of the town, we want to recognize tonight longtime Wilmington resident Brian Casey. Mr. Casey served our country in the United States Army. He first joined the Army in 1984 and deployed to Afghanistan during 2011 and 2012, where he earned many awards and decorations, including the Afghanistan Campaign Medal, the Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, the Overseas Service Ribbon, the Army Good Conduct Medal, just to name a few. Brian's a longtime volunteer with the local heroes organization, where he cooked many a meal and care packages with other volunteers. Brian's also volunteered many hours in the kitchen with Wilmington's Marine Corps League, where he, his father was a longtime member as well. Brian and his mom, Lorraine, are always a phone call away to assist with any veteran program that's in, in need, so tonight, it's my honor for us to salute to service to Mr. Brian Casey. Thank you for your service, Brian.
At this time, this brings the meeting to a close, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Removed.
What's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, unanimous. Have a good night, thank you.